All right, it's six thirty. I'm gonna call the study session of city council order. Uh, council members Ryan and Triscoll are unable to make tonight.
Oh.
Uh, we got two items on the agenda tonight. Uh, first up is the public right of way, uh, discussion.
Are you gonna come over here?
I'll come over here.
All right.
You wanna?
Yeah, I'll do it very quick and then I'm gonna turn it over.
Okay.
Okay.
Shall I?
Yep.
All right.
So the, uh, the rights of way code and the regulations within it are an important tool for us. Just as we're in-investing in infrastructure, all the, uh, community and council work that's gone into that. It's also i-important that we protect and manage this right of way, um, as best we can. And this, uh, code section, as you'll see if you have it already, is about just that. And, um, I'll turn over to Reed and Brent to give it over to you.
All right, uh, good evening, uh, mayor and city council, Brent Soderland, director of public works, and Reed Betzing, city attorney. So tonight, we're gonna be talking about, uh, our right of way code and updating that. Um, so the agenda is really to look at the way we issue right of way permits in our current process, and then, uh, proposed amendments, and then cleanups. So, uh, what is public right of way? Public right of way is basically, um, anything in the street, alleys, sidewalks, um, and our bike paths. It's basically anything that property that the city owns, that we regulate. And then I'll let you take the municipal code section.
Sure. And, and so we do have a provision already set forth in our code, and it is pretty vanilla. And it's been that way since the seventies. And essentially, one of the things that we found as a group, um, in dealing with a lot of requests for operating within our public right of way is, we didn't really have a good standardized process. So essentially, what was, what is existing in our code basically says that if you wanna operate within our right of way, i.e. if you're doing something in the street, if you're doing something on a sidewalk, if you're trimming a tree and you're having to kind of block our sidewalk, you need to get a permit, and you need to have insurance. And literally, that's all it says. But it doesn't really talk about what the permitting process is. Doesn't talk about what the insurance requirements are. And so when we sat down to talk about, you know, what we would need to do, a lot of it came down to standardization. Making sure that we're consistent across different types of permits that you would come in and get. One of the things that also precipitates the need for these changes is, in recent years, we've seen a lot of requests to operate within our right of way. And it has gone beyond simply, hey, you know, can I put some cones out in, in the street while I'm doing something on my driveway? It's gone beyond that. That's kind of routine. We see that all the time. It's very limited in terms of the area that they're taking up. What we've seen is a lot of the telecommunications companies coming through and, um, wanting to not only operate within our public right of way, but essentially put their conduit, put their fiber straight down our roadways. The challenge with that is federal law basically allows them to. And it says we cannot prohibit that. Um, so the Federal Telecommunications Act basically requires us to come up with a process where we're not unduly burdening these telecommunications companies from putting in fiber. So we receive all these requests, uh, coming through. We've never really had a process for how we address that. The last thing that we want as an organization is having multiple groups operating within the same right of way, blocking off streets without any sort of coordination between the work that's being done. Um, not only between that company and another company, but also with the city. We need to know what they're doing. We need to come up with a traffic plan. We need to come up with all sorts of things to make sure that we're managing, um, this appropriately. So...
And we talked about a lot of these activities.
Yeah, a-and then coming through kind of the standardization, um, what we're doing is we're going through the e-tracket. So it's online. You could go ahead and do this online. You're not having to come in, fill out a permit request, and then wait several days. Once we approve it, once we go through, we have engineering staff take a look at it, traffic engineering, if it's going to lead to any sort of road closures or road blockages. What we always wanna do is make sure that when we're approving any sort of permit for operating within our right of way, that we have, one, the ability for vehicular access to, to make it past that location as well as the sidewalk. We're also concerned about pedestrians that may be using that area to ensure that there's an alternative route for people to get to go, um, where they're going. So this is just an example of, or that was an example of our standard kind of right of way permit that someone would see online. Um, I've talked about kind of some of the concerns with the current code. It was really just unclear. It wasn't really expansive in terms of the requirements. As you can see, when you add seventeen pages of text, it gets a little bit more clear in terms of what it is that, uh, someone is requiring. But in terms of, uh, some of the amendments, it's talking about the appropriate levels of insurance. When we have someone that's doing something within our public right of way, we wanna make sure that, um, if they're doing something and they, you know, cause injury to someone or causes damage to our own infrastructure, that there's insurance behind it to make sure that we can recover that. Um, we also have standards set forth in terms of repair and replacement. So once someone is operating within our public right of way, how they're putting it back. Uh, we also have warranty provisions within there. We're typically requiring, if you're coming in, you're doing some work within our right of way, and you're putting it back, that you're gonna warranty it for two years. Um, that way, it doesn't fall apart, you know, two months from then when rain comes in or snow comes in, that we can still have the legal ability to make them come back and restore it to the way it was. Um, and just kind of consistency with the application. I don't know. What am I missing?
I think you pretty much have it covered. I mean, we really are, we're establishing what our work hours should be. We're really just cleaning up the process.
Yeah, we, we obviously don't want folks that are working at, you know, midnight. Um, we generally have the hours in which you would be able to operate within our public right of way. They're generally during kind of those working hours. I think it goes up till perhaps seven P M.
Yeah, it's seven to seven now. That's what's in the new, the new code. And then you can't work on the weekends, um, unless you get permission from the city.
Yeah, so adding, adding those specifying the work hours, um, also a requirement that they keep, that they keep, excuse me, the, the work site clean. That was never a provision that was within our, um, our existing code. So this is just an added level that someone has in order to operate within our right of way. And then setting forth some of the traffic control that would be needed. You can't just put, you know, a single orange cone out there and expect that to be sufficient to make sure that, you know, drivers approaching at nighttime will be able to see this. Um, so just adding standards throughout the, the code to guide those persons operating within the right of way. And then, last but not least, um, we added a section for, uh, violating it. An ability to actually give someone a ticket for operating within our right of way without a permit. Now, I don't imagine that we're gonna have the police going out there and issuing citations. Um, obviously, if someone continued to do that, we certainly would. Uh, but I would imagine that the standard kind of conduct would be, once we came across a situation like this, is letting them know you gotta go, you know, a stop work order. You gotta, you gotta go get a permit, fill out a permit online, um, before you can continue work, so. But for those who, who would choose to continue to do work without getting a permit, they could be issued a ticket into our municipal court.
How much does a permit cost, really?
What's that?
How much does a permit cost, by the way?
It depends on what work you're doing. I mean, we, we adopt, um, I guess, the, the permit schedule.
Okay. So if I were to like get like a roll-off bin, you know, parked out in front of the house or something like that?
There's a schedule in the code.
There would be something that would cover that. Okay. I wanna say it's like fifty dollars.
Yeah, I, I think it's not too bad, right?
It's fifty bucks, but, yeah.
So, is that right? Okay. So I appreciate your work cleaning this up and writing seventeen pages of text. I'm confident there was more than one version that had to be reviewed by more than one person. So my biggest concern is kind of, how is this gonna interrupt kind of what people are used to doing? Kind of as terms of standard operating procedures and, you know, and it's mostly, you know, the homeowner who, you know, is used to dumping a pile of mulch in front of his house every year and takes him a week or two to put it in his garden, or just, just that kind of change in procedures for people who are used to doing things, maybe would be more stringent. And, you know, things that are, you know, yeah, I'll stop. That was one question I wanted.
Well, I mean, you'll still follow the basic process, right? You'll still go through e-tracket, and the engineering staff will still review it. It just gives the city, I guess, a little more leverage on how the work is done, right? So we've, we've put this two-year warranty on it. So if you, if you do work in the right of way and it falls apart, right, then we, we can make you come back and fix it. But for something like a small thing, like putting mulch on the right of way, that should still be very straightforward.
Are people doing, getting permits for that now? And getting permits for rollaways?
They're getting permits for rollaways. We do have a permit for that. They're, they're supposed to be.
Yeah, but, yeah, that's what I mean, like a change to agree.
They're supposed to.
Yeah, but are, is that our kind of procedure now that if I dump some mulch on my front, I should get a permit? Or is that usually?
That... Yeah, somebody has to...
And how is that different than parking your car on the street for ten miles? I mean, there's, there's no difference between mulch sitting there and a car sitting there.
Sort of. Depending on, I guess, I would say with a car, there's a certain level of reflectivity in terms of, I, I can see that there's a car there. And when you're driving along at night, it may be more challenging if you come across, you know, a three-foot mound of, you know, topsoil. So technically, everyone should be getting a right of way permit, too.
Do you believe that we're gonna be enforcing that more in the future?
No. I guess this would give us a tool, like if somebody did have like a bunch of roll-off bins blocking a sidewalk or whatever, to give us the enforcement mechanism to move it, is what I'm getting out of this.
Yeah, I think this is more intended for the telecom companies that are coming in.
Right, no, I, I, yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I agree with that a percent. I'm just trying to think about collateral kind of challenges it creates. It's also a tool if, you know, someone weren't showing discretion with where their mulch pile was, if it was out on the middle of the street, if it was, um, you know, if we, we need, if our, kind of, uh, if, if our, uh, counseling them on where the mulch should be weren't working, this would be a tool that we could, could use.
Yeah, right. I, I would say generally from the city's perspective, the, the landscaping type material is probably low in terms of what this seeks to address. Um, in terms of priorities, we're talking about those folks who are literally digging up our right of way. Those persons with perhaps the roll-offs that are, that are there for multiple days, multiple weeks. If someone's doing construction and just deciding to, to leave stuff out there. We're talking about more of kind of the long-term impacts to our roadways than we are of, you know, the person doing a, a weekend, um, landscaping project. Yeah, I, I would agree with that. This is really addressing people that cut into the street, right? So if you come back, if you cut in the street for a utility and you come back and you patch it back, and then your patch fails within six months, then now we can go make you come back and fix it, right?
So Keith, when you sent the red...
Who?
Uh, Keith.
That's okay.
That is, wow!
I, I, I'm sorry. Sorry, my apologies. So when you sent the red line, it was covered in red line. It's like we had no code or...
Yeah.
Where, where, what was it like before?
Wild, wild west.
It literally had two sections. It had the section that said, "Get a permit and have insurance."
So this, so all that stuff you really expanded?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, it just, I couldn't tell from, that's why I asked for the red line. It's just...
Yeah.
Okay, so the second thing is, um, and this may be in another place, but eight dash one dash four talks about snow removal, and it's crossed out. Is it someplace else? Cause we've had problems, especially with the property, Mike knows it well, where, um, they don't, it's an absentee owner, and they don't remove their snow. And we get a call like every time there's snow, they're not removing the snow, and what's a reasonable time?
So that is, that's one of the changes that we made in that section. That, that's typically the section that it's in. Snow removal is in the public right of way.
But, but it's taken out, is it someplace else now?
So, no, it's still there. What had, what it has been replaced with is, in the past, one of the challenges that we had from a code compliance standpoint is, it said that snow needed to be removed, snow or ice needed to be removed from public right of ways within a reasonable amount of time. Um, and it was, what is a reasonable amount of time? Um, because, you know, it's a subjective term. So what was changed in that specific section is saying twenty-four hours after the cessation of that snow event.
Okay, so, so that's in there, and I, I just need to look for it. Okay, thank you. When I, when I saw it was crossed out, I went, oh, no.
I know. When you ask for the red line, I'm like, yeah, okay.
Well, but the next, the next topic we talked about, it's very easy to see what you're doing with, once you have the red line. But this, it, it, it wasn't clear from the...
Yeah, when we had to basically add the entirety of it, it, it makes it a little bit more challenging, so. Normally, when we're amending something, it's probably a little bit easier to track cause we're not having to make wholesale changes, but...
I hope you didn't have to do that from scratch.
No comment. It was fine. It was copy paste, except...
I, I, my apologies.
No.
I thought that that's where you started, and it was an old version.
In, in part, it was. Yeah, we kind of started at various stages. It's fine.
You can push back.
No, it's fine. I, I would typically wanna do that anytime that I present an ordinance in which we're changing something is be able to show you what's being changed in this one, cause it was just a huge addition. It was hard to do.
We have provisions about dust control. If we are talking about, you know, salt cutting, things being done in the right of way, do we have, I mean, it's good that we have the operating hours very clearly laid out in there. So that helps on the noise side of things, at least on my end. But I was curious if we had dust control or mitigation kind of stuff? Cause if we have, like you said, folks doing trenching, you know, potholeing, whatever, I wasn't sure if that showed up in here. I couldn't find it off the top of, but I may have missed it.
Yeah, so...
It's clean work site, which is certainly going in that, you know...
Normally, like dust control and that, we would cover that under our, um, MS four permit.
Okay.
Which is our municipal, I can't remember, but it, it has to do with our water quality.
Yeah.
And that, that's where I've covered that in the past.
Okay. Perfect, great.
Any other questions?
So we're bringing back for first reading?
With the weeks?
Yes, sir.
Do? Yeah, that's, I mean, to, to Robert's point, I think this whole thing is, it's not intended to have people that are having, even have a roll-off or have a bio or do some block something for a couple of days. It's intended for the telecommunications companies for cutting it.
Great. Appreciate all the work.
All right.
I think we can beat that by seven, three.
It might be, I'll see.
I gotta figure out where the next one starts.
I got more questions than I can.
Huh?
I'm chock full of questions.
Are we done in like half an hour?
We're done, yeah. Moving on into...
Andrea, do you mind showing everyone my tomatoes that I so proudly brought in?
So why did you only bring them for her?
Thank you. Oh, so noted.
That's very good.
So noted. There's cold, there's two cold ones that were in the fridge, but the rest were...
So we go over to the...
Traffic code?
Okay, I'll bring you some. My cold ones, he means tomatoes.
Tomatoes.
For the listening audience.
All right, let's get off the, uh, move on to the traffic code.
As long as it takes our city attorney to shuffle papers, I will turn it over to Reed for this discussion also. Thank you. So this is, um, uh, well, our topic is the model traffic code. So since nineteen fifty-two, and it is a requirement of state law that, uh, the Department of Transportation adopts what are called model traffic rules, if you will. Um, and since nineteen fifty-two, they have been putting together various iterations of this code. Um, the purpose of it is to make it so that there is some level of consistency for those persons traveling within our roadways. So if you were to traverse from Littleton to Inglewood to Sheridan, you, you pretty much understand what the rules of the road are. So the state adopts, um, this model traffic code. And then local jurisdictions, actually, the federal government adopts a model traffic code. The state also, um, weighs into it. So the state adopts these, and local governments also, um, adopt the model traffic code. Not only does it help with consistency in terms of, um, when vehicles are traveling across jurisdictions, it also helps when we issue a ticket within our district court. So most of our traffic tickets that are issued, um, they're issued to our municipal court. But there are some types of cases in which it is a lot more appropriate to issue that ticket with, into the district court. Um, that could do with injuries, the substantial amount of injuries that may be happening in a particular case. It can also deal with certain things like DUIs. That's not something that, um, we can actually prosecute within our municipal court. That's a state charge. So I would say by and large, most of the traffic violations get issued into the city. But in terms of when we need to issue it into the state court, it would be nice if it tracks well with state law. So, um, am I going next?
So, so you're saying we can't decide to be a, a left-hand driving side, just a little bit?
Yeah, we're, yeah.
Cause we're quirky.
We would drive on the left side of the road here, Littleton. Um, so some of the major highlights, there really aren't that, a huge amount. You know, in years past, they've adopted new iterations of this code every ten years. It was in nineteen, I wanna say nineteen ninety, two thousand, two thousand ten, two thousand twenty. That could be off one. And then they issued one in twenty twenty-four. This past April is when they adopted, um, the most recent version. And some of the highlights, if you will, um, a lot is really just cleaning up definitions that were within the code as well as adding new violations that, um, the state legislature came up with, uh, putting those into our code. So, um, one of the, the highlights, if you will, from the adoption of the twenty twenty-four model traffic code is previously, there wasn't anything that talked about electric scooters. So over the years, depending on where you are and depending on what year you're in, um, we've seen a lot of electric scooters in and around, um, the various jurisdictions. So if you've ever been down town in Denver, um, it's kind of like a menace, uh, in those locations. They've obviously had a lot of issues with electric scooters, uh, specifically. We dealt with companies wanting to come in, um, much like we do with the electric e-bikes. Uh, but we've had companies come in, and in fact, Littleton is when they tried to pilot, uh, a program in which they, you know, would drop off some of their electric scooters. And we had to go through a whole kind of licensing provision with them. Ultimately, they decided that Littleton wasn't gonna work for them, and they, they took their scooters and went away. But you've also seen electric scooters, I mean, as opposed to just renting these, we see people actually purchasing them. So within your neighborhoods, you'll probably see kids on scooters, adults on scooters. So one of the things that the model traffic code updated was it provided a definition for what electric scooters are, as well as holding persons, um, riding electric scooters to be, to be consistent with state law. So someone can actually receive a ticket for riding an electric scooter and violating kind of the rules of the road. So that wasn't something that they had the ability to do prior to this. Generally speaking, electric scooters are allowed on roadways. Um, they're allowed on roadways if it's thirty-five miles per hour or less. In Denver, other jurisdictions have been a little bit, have taken kind of greater regulations with scooters. So Denver, for example, they had so many incidents on Sixteenth Street Mall that they came up with their own provision, which says you, you can't ride these on the sidewalk. Unless you're crossing the street or something like that, they have to be in the roadway. Now, that's fine unless you're a driver on the roadway, and then you're wondering, why are these damn scooters on the roadway? Why aren't they on the sidewalk? So that's one of the issues that Denver specifically addressed. But, uh, the whole idea of this section was just to, um, define electric scooters and hold them accountable to the rules of the road.
Question I have with the scooters, the definition, it says they have handlebars. I know there's several people that have the, you know, the one-wheeled electric. I don't know what you call them, but...
They go fast, those unit, whatever.
The uniwheeled, there are no handlebars on those.
Yeah.
I don't know how they would...
There's a song...
Look at the definitions of things, huh?
There's a song about that by, the band, No Handlebars.
I don't think that's what that is.
Oh, okay, sorry. Keep going.
I don't know, I have to take a look, but I don't know if state law has a definition for that.
Yeah, I don't know. I was just trying to figure it. So I was looking at the definitions of things, trying to figure out if something could be, you know, it's, it's a tiny little...
What it would be called?
Huh?
Yeah, they added a new definition for, I wanna, it wouldn't be an auto cycle, but an auto cycle is like, basically, what we'd think of those, those tri-wheel vehicles that we see out there. Um, they added a specific section for auto cycle, cause it was never, it never fit in with the definitions they had for vehicles. So they added that as another one, but I'll take a look and see.
Yeah, I don't know how we say, how, except, you know, I mean, we'll get to two.
What do you have to do with the speed? Cause I've seen that guy. He travels with cars.
Yeah.
Well, there's a car, there's probably three or four of them, so.
And I've seen him on the Flat River Trail, too, and I'm like, wait a minute. I don't think he's going as fast, but it's fast.
Well, you know, they used to have, and this is probably twenty years ago, they came out with those segways. And I know in a previous iteration, they had to address those as vehicles, so perhaps it fits in with that, but I'll take a look for next time we bring this back.
Can I ask a really stupid question? Just kind of what is the order of precedence for our code versus the stick this?
So in term. So basically, in terms of state law, we can't be less restrictive than what's at state law. We can be more restrictive in terms of what's state law in terms of. Is it better to be written into municipal court versus state court? Is that the question?
No, just like who? By adopting this, the the state code, what do we do to our own code? How does that impact our our?
It becomes our code.
Yeah, I mean, this is what we we base all of the tickets that are being written currently. We don't have a standalone ordinance that lists out kind of speeding infractions. They all come from the model traffic code.
And and so it is unique to Littleton. There are callouts that are specific to Littleton that doesn't fit with Inglewood or Denver, but it's generally similar.
It's called a toy vehicle according to this. That's its definition, I think.
How fast can they go?
It's.
It it's not speed limited. It's just like a catch-all for non-highway designated use vehicles, gas powder, electric powered vehicles. Like mini bikes, pocket bikes, kamikaze boards, go pads.
Kamikaze board, that's how bad everyone of it is.
That's, yeah.
So one of the other highlights, and perhaps as we get, sadly, we are actually getting close to the snow season. But just add, this was something that came forward in state law. It basically prohibited passing snowplows due to accidents that had occurred. Where someone does not want to be driving behind the snowplow and seeks to go around them. Makes it a violation to pass those when they're in kind of that echelon formation, that kind of V formation, or if they're. One right in front of another trying to clear snow. It's just kind of one of the new violations that.
We ever, we don't, I mean, Broadway might be the only place that happens in Littleton that they would even do that because it's usually just one.
We do cloud echelon, especially like Santa Fe.
That's not us, though.
That's not us.
Yeah, it's not us.
We would, we would do it on some of our arterial roads where, you know.
It's just two of them.
You just have one in the front and one behind.
Yeah.
Do you play like Thunder Road when you do that? Does that have Bruce Springsteen on it?
Yes.
Okay.
That's required by our code.
Yeah, I like, maybe we want to add that. Maybe we want to do that.
It's kind of less restricted.
Yeah, that's right.
So one of the other things that came forward from the state legislature that made it into. The model traffic code was automated vehicle identification systems. Essentially, what we're talking about is photo radar or red light cameras. Years ago, the city of Littleton actually approved, city council approved the use of, I think it was red light cameras.
Yeah.
And that had a pretty short run within the city before they were all removed. So within our city code, we have already the authorization to do it. But one of the challenges that was always around this system is that previously you actually had to serve someone with that ticket. So, you know, it can take a picture, any, you know, but you would need to be physically served with that ticket. So people just want to pay them, and it was costly to actually do. One of the changes that happened at state law is they expanded the ability to serve people. And you could actually serve them by registered mail. So you go past one of these machines. It picks up your license plate. It will send notification, you know, checks with DMV, gets gets the address where the bike, where the vehicle is registered. And will send you a citation. The whole citation process, there's no points involved with these. It's it's illegal to actually impose any points. And it's just a civil citation, so it's not going to affect someone's driving record. It's not going to trigger a hold on someone's driving record. One of the challenges that I've heard is with the ease in in which they've. But they've made it easier to actually serve people with these tickets, but one of the challenges with it is. They also prohibited how companies get paid. So the way that this has previously been done has been you hire a company. They come out there with their machines. They they set them up. They install them. They monitor them. They send out the notifications. They handle all the processing. And they get a certain percentage of those monies. And that's how it it pays for itself. It's no out-of-pocket expense for a city. And then it just kind of, you just turn it over to these individuals. One of the changes that the state law made is that. It can't be, you can't compensate companies by a percentage base basis. So the days of them getting, you know, twenty-five percent of whatever the fees are are gone. It has to be based upon the machine and how much it costs and the actual service that's being provided in terms of what their compensation is. So it was already a pretty difficult market for folks to find companies to service, kind of red light cameras, these speed cameras. One of the other kind of drawbacks or one of the limitations is. What they didn't want to see by expanding potentially the use of this is runaway fines. Where they didn't want a jurisdiction saying, you know, there might be a jurisdiction near Red Rocks that that has their own kind of camera setup. Where they were charging, you know, two hundred dollars. And so they actually prescribed it in state law that if you're going to use this, the maximum fine that you can get is like fifty dollars. So it's relatively reasonable and it puts some restraints on some locations from, you know, just coming up with a crazy fine amount. So I'm not saying we're going to do that, or I've heard any real interest in doing that. I I believe Patrick Driscoll. You know, a few council meetings ago said he was kind of interested, but.
Well, I think a couple of people have asked about that. What would it take? I don't know if we if we need to have some studies on it or if it was just not in our code is the issue. And if we do this, if it's like, hey, we want to get a speed camera up on Bowls. What would it take to do that?
I've, yeah, in terms of.
Study that.
Yeah, we can certainly provide you some more information in terms of what it would take. We can't just put it up tomorrow, obviously.
Figure out the police implications and the cost and all that. We want to bring that back to you.
So that's not the study. I think, I don't know if it was your read intention that you would have, you can't legally put something up there without having the rationale to say you're going to put this. I thought that's where I remember hearing something about that.
Yeah, there generally needed to be kind of a study that was done prior to putting those up. I think there were some changes with the recent red legislation that may have eased the ability to place those in certain locations. So it's possible. There's a, there's also a notification period of time. So you could have put one up like tomorrow and and people would start getting tickets. I mean, you'd have to give them. A a notice, kind of a warning as these things are set up. So there is kind of a process in place so that people get comfortable, I guess, with them being there.
Felt like Patrick made a good case that there's call for kind of, well, he has a, not though view, but on.
Bowls.
On Bowls. I felt like he made a decent case for that. I'm I'm happy.
Because she even says they can't get a squad car in.
Right. I'm happy to work on that more. I felt like he made a good case. If it requires any more time, I'm happy to.
There's a lot of citizens will email us, I'm sure you've received them, that there's places in the city where cars just go too fast. Or they think they go too fast.
County line, everyone's drag racing.
Who did, who did do the wrong?
So I think after we can do with this code, I think there's some interest in bringing some factor to figure out.
Yeah, just to see even with the cost, like the the practical implementation options would be if the, we're allowed for it, which it sounds like it now will.
I can certainly provide counsel with some information in terms of if counsel were interested, this is the limitations and this is the prerequisites for establishing one of those. I can certainly provide that to you all.
I think, I think there's interest, yeah.
There might be something, maybe we do it Bowls and see how it goes before we do it all over the city.
Yeah, and then finding that vendor will also be kind of a challenge, but, you know, first steps first, I'll I'll get you some information. This is kind of along the lines of the snowplow, but they added requirements for drivers to move over, if you'll recall. Oh, gosh, it's probably been about at least ten years ago, they had passed what is called the move over law. So and that was primarily just for emergency vehicles, so they wanted to make sure that if you're approaching a police vehicle. That you're you're moving over, that you're not just, you know, slowing down as you go past them, but if there's a lane next to you that you can move into. They want you to physically move into that lane if it can be done with safety. And to give that additional space for law enforcement officers that are operating on, you know, the side of the road. So this expands that law and it basically says for any utility vehicles, so the construction vehicles. If you have folks out there from the utility companies, XL, whoever it is. If you have a disabled vehicle that has its hazards on, so if it's a flat tire and someone's changing their tire. They also make this law apply in those cases also, so you're still required to technically, if you can. Move over to a lane if there's a lane next to you that's open.
Unless they're tearing up our roads, then no, you don't need to move over, right? That was part of the earlier.
If if what?
If it's, if it's putting in fiber optics on our roads, then we don't, we don't have to move over.
Right. Only if they have a permit.
Only if they have a permit.
If they have a permit, then yes.
Okay, thank you.
They don't proceed.
And one of the other things that happened was we came up with some laws as it relates to bicycle safety. And so it basically made it unlawful for folks to drive within designated bike lanes. I mean, we see it all the time. I'm sure the mayor sees it quite often, someone just cruising along. It's like, that is not the traffic lane. But it added penalties for that specifically. It added. Also, it added a section when one, we're going to be taking a right-hand turn, and that's something that we updated in our code. So if you're taking a right-hand turn and you have to go through the bike lane, it clarified under what circumstances that's doing. The other thing that it did is is it added kind of, we'll call them safety enhancers, but it's really kind of sentencing enhancers. So anytime that there's an automobile involved in a collision with a pedestrian. A bicyclist, someone on a scooter, someone not in another vehicle. It added the ability to actually impose higher fines in those particular cases, so. That's what they call vulnerable users of our roadway, so it's an effort to try to provide at least some greater protections. And make sure that people are paying attention to those people who may be in and around our roadways. I don't know if I identified. Other things. And going through our code, there were some sections within the code that we updated, didn't make it into the slides. But one of the things that we addressed was weight limits of of vehicles. So we had adopted certain portions of our code back in nineteen seventy-two. So in nineteen seventy-two, a heavy truck that were prohibited on certain roadways was seven thousand pounds.
How everyone has one of those.
Well, times have changed and vehicles have obviously gotten much larger, much heavier. So one of the changes that we made in our code was updating that weight limit from seven thousand to sixteen thousand. I think that's what we call. Something like that. It's a teen now.
How much do the trash trucks?
They're, they're always overweight. More, yeah.
So what about citizens that get concerned about these heavy vehicles on these roads? Does this limit that or not? It allows more of it?
When you say these, what heavy vehicles, trash trucks or?
They just say big, be, big vehicles. I guess they're worried about the lemon property and all the big vehicles that are going to go delivery.
That's okay. That's how I was just trying to figure out. You talk about delivery trucks or just SUVs?
Yeah, no, not SUVs. Delivery, uh, commercial.
Commercial, okay.
Yeah, and so are there, is there a limitation on which roads those heavy commercial vehicles can be on? And was there? And does this change anything?
Technically, when we have designated truck routes within our city, maybe we actually have one on minerals. I'm not sure where our truck routes are. We do have weight restrictions on mineral as it relates to the vehicles traveling up another. So if you have a vehicle that is larger than, say, the the allowed weight. Essentially, what our law is saying is that you can make a delivery, so in the case of a moving truck, something along those lines. They're supposed to be taking the shortest route to and from that location from a designated truck route. But they shouldn't be cruising around the city in that vehicle. So that's been a little bit more challenging to. To enforce. We don't typically have, and I haven't seen one here in in many years. I believe in the past, we used to have. We used to partner with what would be called a port of authority, and those are the, it's kind of a quasi kind of police force that will weigh vehicles. You'll see that when you don't have weigh stations, you'll see, you know, trucks have to pull over to be weighed. So I haven't seen that here in the city of Littleton. I know if Doug were here, he would offer some. Some witty comments about that, but it's just been, we have it on the books, but I would say the enforceability is is kind of challenging.
So basically, we have designated truck routes.
Mm-hmm.
For heavy commercial vehicles. I'm not talking about an SUV.
Correct.
And but enforcement's a little tough.
It's challenging. I mean, we try to head that off now from a development review standpoint. So for example, on mineral. There's a proposed big box store coming potentially to that location. And for, and on the development side, we've already kind of sketched out how that, how deliveries actually come into that site. So we'll try to take it off of some of the main roads. I know there were and are a lot of concerns about traffic on mineral deliveries happening on mineral. And so from a development standpoint, we've already put forth in the agreement how those vehicles enter and exit that site. With a, I guess, a thought towards keeping them off of some of these other roadways that are already.
Makes sense.
Challenges with with traffic.
That's good for us to respond to citizens that ask those kind of questions.
So one update to this is there actually may be an amended code. So CDOT said that they're planning on bringing a different version this fall. And so in terms of when this will make it back to council, I may wait a little bit. I know that there's one section. That has been removed that we, which is kind of what necessitated them to amend it, but. The section that was moved, removed from this version was eluding. So eluding the police used to be obviously a crime and punishable by a ticket. And that got removed in the model traffic code, so obviously, we don't want to give individuals any incentive to elude the police, so. We're kind of pausing in terms of when I bring this back to see if they bring back that amended version. I don't think, that's the, there's a couple of other things, but I don't think they're major. So what I'm planning on doing is just kind of monitoring this to see when it might come back. And if there are really any substantive changes before I bring it back for kind of first and second reading. Assuming council wants to do this.
Is there any reason to separate the, because you you're giving it, this is what, this is, you're giving us two different documents to update. One is the.
Sure.
One is the.
Yeah, so the very.
One is the our traffic ordinance, and then the other one is the. The MTC, right?
Yes, and so the entirety is traffic regulations. And so section one of traffic regulations is the adoption of the twenty twenty-four model traffic code. So the model traffic code is affixed to the back just for reference, so you know what code it is that we're adopting. And then we have the other kind of Littleton-centric ordinances that follow, such as. Kind of the weight restrictions where you can ride your golf cars or golf carts.
Thank you for not calling me out on my stupid question.
No, no.
I'm just, is there any reason to rush one of these because we believe we're going to have an onslaught of scooters that we want to. I'm just, is there any reason to rush one of these because we believe we're gonna have an onslaught of scooters that we wanna deal with, or we wanna deal with, we're having a particular problem with um golf carts? Wayward golf carts or anything like that?
Not yet, I'm not aware of any urgency on the part of PD, anything that they've been seeing that they wanna address, I don't, I'm not aware of that, so.
Two questions I have were, and I I don't think they're an issue, but I was trying to figure out in here, searching with the concerns, but there was one with the insurance, when it was a, you know, before operating in low-speed electric, you know, golf carts and what are the EPA MDs, you know, have insurance, I didn't know if. MPADs? MPADs, you know, whatever. Cause I think some of those mobility devices, I think, you know, I haven't seen any of those on Littleton, but I do know that there's, you know, electric uh wheelchairs that people are driving around in some, in many cases are on the street, cause they can't fit on the sidewalk, cause sidewalks are it just don't fit a wheelchair. And just wanted to make sure that we're not, you know, gonna have issues with someone not having insurance for their mobility device. And I think there was in there that it wasn't called out, but I didn't know where the fine line between electric wheelchair and some sort of electric mobility device would come into play.
Yeah, I'll clarify that when we bring this back. And along those same lines, when we're talking about insurance and scooters, we obviously see a lot of kids that are.
That's what I was gonna say, that was my second question.
Sitting around with the scooters.
Insurance if they're on a scooter, and I don't think any kid can get insurance or.
Right, so, yeah, let's clarify that and make sure that we're we're clear on, and I'm assuming the answer is no.
You know, and I think I said scooters didn't require, it was, it was one of the low-speed, like whatever, there was so many different definitions out there, so scooters.
And I'll make sure that we're, um when we adopt it, that we're, we're doing that carve-out specifically for those persons that are using it as a mobility device.
It says carry a liability insurance policy for low speed. If it's a child, would they be covered by their parents?
In theory. I mean, you know, people can operate bicycles too and.
Right.
Not requiring insurance, and so um we should probably be trying to treat them similarly in that case. I'll make sure that that is clear.
Any other questions? All right, well, we'll see it when we see it. Thanks. Any update from the city man or?
No report, man.
And update from the city too? No report, thank you. It's gonna tell council something, a r- update, but I forgot what it was, so I don't have an update anymore. All right, there you go, Robert, seven nineteen, we're in.
That's our fastest speed.